Welcome everyone to the third UC Council of this school year. If we could please call roll.
Moseley.
Present.
Gast. Wellington.
Present.
Campbell.
Present.
Tovar Contras.
Present.
Let us please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and prayer. If we could have Reverend Michael Job up for the prayer, please?
Dear gracious heavenly Father, we thank you for the opportunity to meet your Lord God this evening. Father God, we ask and pray that you bless this UC Council heavenly Father. We ask that you just continue to guide them oh Father God and put people around them dear Lord God and just want to elevate them and lift them up. Be upon this city dear Lord God and those in which that wish that do things and encourage and elevate people within this community. And we just thank you and praise you. In Jesus Christ's name we pray. Amen.
Item number three, welcome by the president.
Again, I'd like to wait, uh, welcome everyone here in the audience and everyone who's watching on the live stream and on the YouTube channel in the future. Thank you all for supporting us. Thank you for always being here. Again, today's the third meeting of our school year and today's date is April 16th of 2024. It is now 6:01 PM. If we could go ahead and move on to the next item, please?
Item four petitions and communications, oral communications from the audience. Please limit your remarks to five minutes and to items not on the agenda.
So this is the part of the meeting where we have audience participation. So again, if you could just limit your remarks to five minutes. Thank you.
Hello, um, my name is Heather Job, Hutchinson resident. Um, I wanted to share with you guys some news I don't know if you're aware of. Um, the you, the, the city council this morning finalized and approved the contract for our new city manager. And he will be coming on the end of May. What I'd like to ask is what would you as youth council members, as youth in Hutchinson, like to see from a city manager? Or what do you think that he could do to support our youth here in Hutchinson?
Thank you for letting us know that. Um, I've recently found out that information as well, so thank you for the reminder. Uh, what I'd like to see from our new city manager perhaps is by showing his support, that's a huge thing right there. And to show his support, I definitely think that maybe like actually going to our events or like even just publicly, publicly supporting us here at this UC Council. Because again, we literally just, we restarted last year and just having support from a huge important member of the city to show his support, that would be huge.
I second that. I believe that with the new city manager, it would be really nice if not only if he could, you know, back certain events, but also just, um, be more proactive in starting a lot of events because we have declined in a lot of our community events and get togethers over the last years. You know, we used to have block parties and get togethers very often and it's not something that's so like seen so often. And I believe that the UC Council should not be the only people, you know, try to put out there. And I know that we are not, but I just, I think that he's in a place where it'd be really nice if he could use the position that he is in to reinstate some of those block parties and get together stuff he used to have.
Um, I would definitely like to, you know, talk to him and see what maybe he has in mind for youth and maybe exchange ideas. Um, again, basically everything they were saying, I definitely agree with them. How just having the support and just know, starting this last year would be fantastic.
Same as the rest of them, more support for like the block parties and stuff.
I agree with McKinsey and Ruby and I feel like having a supportive city manager is very important and.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Actually have one more comment.
Sure.
Um, I do know that recently these last couple of years, we've heard about our sales tax for food, this, you know, disappearing and stuff. So I would like to know more about that from him if like we were able, ever able to have him come in, just because he would probably know more about that than we would. Uh, just because the community has been talking about how they're, you know, looking forward to the taxes getting taken off of food and, um, just, you know, I want to know whether or not that is something that he is really aware of or in charge of or has anything to do in.
So just to lightly speak on that, that's something that's already in play, but it's in play at a state level. Okay. Um, and I think that inviting him to come talk with you guys or sit down with you guys would be feasible after we've given him time, maybe to kind of settle in. Yeah. Hutch a little bit. Um, there's a lot to learn, so.
I was actually gonna, sorry. Go ahead. I was actually gonna comment on that. What I admired that Mary Grace Clements did in her own city manager beforehand. She came to a city council meeting and she explained like the tax breakdown. I really admired that because it also kept us informed. And that's what I hope the new city manager will be able to accomplish, keeping us informed because that's a major part because how we know what the community needs? How will we know where to participate if we're just not informed? So I just also think just information that the city manager is willing to give us, guidance, any of that would also be a huge support to us.
I definitely agree with all that. I don't know how like a lot of things work and I'm very grateful for Mary, um, to come in and talk to us. So maybe you could come in sometime and ask us or ask them some question.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, audience member.
I just wanna, I've come up, uh, just to share with you, uh, a program that I started, which was called Wisdom Emotion. And Wisdom Emotion is set to, uh, for a, uh, how would you wanna say, uh, a mentorship in which that mentors the youth. Bridge the gap between school and real world, uh, gives, uh, uh, a basic baseline like, uh, learning how to fill out a resume. Uh, doing things, activities or things like learning how to change something as simple as a tire and, and different things of that nature. And it, it started where it was, it was aimed at, at young men. But then we seen an involvement in which where it was, it was not just a young man, but, but a young lady just alike who needs a mentorship. Uh, it also couples with resource managers in which that, uh, reaches out and, and works closely with the family. In which that, uh, gives them the resources in which that we have within our community in which that they can use in order to, to help the family. And so, uh, and so I just wanted to share, uh, that program with you guys. Uh, we also partner with the, uh, with U Services. Um, but she can tell you, Heather can tell you a little bit more about the resource manager part, which is a real vital aspect of it. Each mentor meets with, with their, uh, with their mentee at least at the minimum twice a month. And they do activities, uh, uh, with their mentee. So I'll let you go ahead.
On the spot there. Um, okay. So what the resource managers do for this program is the mentors take and they, their focus is on the mentees in the program. Kind of like you mentioned, the resource manager is focused on, uh, the rest of the family. So if we have somebody that is struggling in a certain area, our job is to go in, meet with that family, figure out what the needs are and help match them with services that are in the community already. Um, Reno County has a lot of resources. They're not always well publicized. And if you are, just to give an example, if you're a working mom and you've got free kids and you're living paycheck to paycheck, you don't really have time to sit down and research what all those options might be. So we kind of step in and give them some of the tools that might help them. So the mentors work with the, the youth directly, the mentee, resource managers who work with the families.
And because it started out like that, a lot of the mentors are men. But, but, uh, the young ladies that come into the program, uh, they are mentored by the resource manager.
So I guess the only thing that I would add to that is that, um, he mentioned resumes and like job applications and everything. They are getting ready to host a resume building, um, workshop. Um, and the purpose of that would be the youth can come in, and this is open to any youth. They don't have to be part of the program to take advantage of this. Um, but they come in and we help you build a resume. And then the resume would get emailed to you. You would get a Word doc version of it so that you learn and we'll teach you how to add on to your resume as you build your resume. Um, so that when you start applying for jobs and you start going out, you have something to kind of go with. And then that's going to be followed up by, um, mock interview workshop. So I just don't have the dates of that. If you know it's gonna be announcing that, but I'll get them for you if you want them.
I just have a couple of questions.
Sure.
Alright, so about how many mentors do you currently have in your program?
Mentors or mentees?
Uh, if you could give me both numbers.
Say about five.
Okay. And is there like an application process or is it just open to everyone?
There is a applica-, it's not an application process, but it's an application in which that is filled out. The purpose of that application is to match you or match the, uh, mentee with a mentor. So that, so that we can get as close as possible, a, a, uh, good match. You know, we just, we just don't want to just, uh, uh, match someone with a, with a mentor just, just because they need a mentor. But we want to make sure that we find the best match for them as possible. And so that's the, that's the purpose of that application.
Is there a certain like demographic, like age that comes into play?
So for the youth, um, it appears for 12 to 21, that's kind of the range for the youth that would come in. Um, the mentors have to be 21 or older and they are background checked and screened. Um, the other piece is that some of our youth that come into the program have other challenges or difficulties or hurdles. So we have to make sure that we're also matching them with a mentor that can help with those specific needs. Um, it's a little bit more in depth than just pushing somebody out for ice cream most places. So there is a little bit more to it and as far as the approach that we take for the mentorship model. It, it would definitely set it apart from like Big Brother supporters.
The, the whole purpose is to, is to build, uh, a bond. So that is, it's more, uh, more likely than not that they, they'll open up with, with issues or whatever in which that, which that they may have as they, as they, uh, participate in the program. And so it's, it's so that they can open up in that aspect, whether they're in a holdup within. And then, and then, uh, don't have a release point or anybody to speak to or talk to.
Not sure if any more of my fellow council members have any more questions for Wisdom Emotion?
I do not. Thank you.
Thank you. This program is a wonderful opportunity for young people. You obviously have our support. And I speak for everyone in my family when I say that. I don't know how to change a tire, so I guess I'll be swinging by some, sometime. But as always, if you ever need anything, support, we're always here to back you. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Esmeralda Tovar Mora, 1404 West 30th Avenue. I just wanted to come up here and invite all of you to a community meeting, um, for USD 308. Um, there have been a couple of meetings by the district, the school district, um, to be able to kind of have a conversation regarding some of the fighting, some of the findings that the steering committee, um, has found in order to essentially make USD 308 a place where families will want to come and stay and bring their children to and have support and access to resources. Um, a couple of ways that that has, those ideas have flourished have come into having a centralized location for a preschool and having a standalone six to eight building. Um, there's a presentation that is had along with community feedback and a survey. Um, the next community meeting is April 17th at 7:00 PM at the Hutchinson Middle School. And April 23rd at 6:30 PM at Morgan Elementary School to, uh, sorry? Oh, the 7th. Yep, 7th. Um, but I also know that a couple of you have reached out in ways to stay civically engaged. And depending on where this conversation goes, it could become a bond issue. Um, not during a primary or general election, but it would be a special election. So that would be something that you as youth city council members could be able to engage our community, um, our youth and their, their families to be able to say either yes or no, but at least show up to the ballot box and be able to state their case for their why. And a part of that too is part of this survey, you're able to kind of let the district know things that do work or have worked for you and things that haven't. Um, being able to just stay informed is a big thing to me. And I think that a lot of you that have reached out want to stay civically engaged. And I think that even having a presentation here, I know that the superintendent, Dr. Don Johnson, um, has reached out too and just ways to be able to engage our youth. And some of you even thought of being able to have that presentation here for your May meeting. So I think that being able to attend a couple of these meetings, have some questions in mind and be able to host your own would really help you take that out into the community so that you're able to engage the youth and kind of have a say as well on the future of USD 308.
Hey, thank you. If you could just repeat this many times one more time for me?
Of course. Alright, we'll pull it up real quick. That's my hand is moving it. April 17th at 7:00 PM Hutchinson Middle School, 210 East Avenue A. April 23rd, 6:30 PM Morgan Elementary School, 111 West 27th Avenue.
Do you end for maybe the younger, um, people watching on the live stream or on the council? Would you mind, um, explaining what a bond issue is?
Yeah. So it goes into being essentially a municipality or a school district. Um, being loaned an amount of money that will be paid back face value. And those are decisions that will affect all of our property owning members in society. Um, and that includes, I want to, let me, let me try to make it a little bit more specific. This loan, um, is made to a government, a corporation, municipality. And then the issuer, um, agrees to pay back that loan at a specific date throughout a specific period, um, through interest payments. Um, they are debt obligations. So it essentially becomes a community related, um, not issue, but generally it becomes something that the whole community is affected by. So if you're paying your property taxes, whether you pay them monthly into your mortgage or whether you pay them at the end of the year, um, those are things that are added to the property taxes. Um, and it's not like it's a big amount. Um, we, 20 years ago, USD 308 had a bond that will be paid out in 2027. Um, so then that amount, if it passes in the future, if this is something that the district goes forward with, then it would add say $10 to $20 extra. And then in 2027, there's an amount that will come off because of the bond from 20 years ago will be paid off in 2027. But I do know that the district will be more than happy to answer more questions. I just know the basics of the fact that it could become a bond, um, question at a special election um, in regards to our entire community and the ways that it attracts our community members and keeps our community members and their children.
Thank you. And I'm going to remind everyone who is above 18 years old to get registered to vote. Alright, any other further communications? Hearing none, if you could please move on to the next item.
Item five, A, Youth Fair Updates Scheduled For May 18th, 10 to 2:00 PM At The CTEA Building. Please note, the date has changed. We need to organize individual tasks for marketing the event to our local youth and their families.
Alright, so I know when we first started discussing about the fair, we had set the original date for, I believe it was April 28th. We have since moved that date to now May 18th. That will be at the Career Tech Building at Hutch, I wanna say Hutch High's campus. And we started discussing like who would, who would talk to certain vendors, who would talk to certain organizations. We started dividing up those tasks and luckily we've been hearing some responses. So that's great. But we are now in that planning process where we want to discuss how we want to get the word out that we are hosting the. But we are now in that planning process where we want to discuss how we want to get the word out that we are hosting the youth fair. Cause again, I'm going to keep bringing this up, how last year we had, I'd say it was pretty successful given it was our first time. We were ju- we were just getting, you know, used to it. But one thing I think we definitely need to focus on was definitely advertising. And I definitely think we should start with schools by notifying the schools that we are having the youth fair in the first place. Any comments?
I definitely agree with that. I know we talked about hanging flyers up in our school and stuff like that, but I think this is something I would, we would definitely want to talk to administrators in our school about, just to get it out to the whole school. Cause you know, that's the biggest way you can get everything spread out to the schools is by the administrators talking to the school entirely.
I agree. I believe that not only talking would be good, but just seeing if maybe we could come in and do some type of, you know, group activity where we, you know, spread the word, like a ten fifteen minute presentation to either some of like the, the classes or just like an overall, what, what is it called? It's been so long since I've had them. You know, we go to the auditorium and? Assembly, yes. You know, sorry, um, I laughed a little loud. You know, see if we could or- organize assemblies for some of the, some of the schools here to see if we can go in and just get the word out, cause that's usually how the kids respond best, you know, as a kid. We also do have an ad on Facebook that is paid for, so we are out there a little bit. And our Instagram will be posted tonight, so we will have, we'll be able to have you guys share them on your Instagram stories and post them, you know, whatever you decide to do on your own platform if you would like to. And we are reusing our flyers from last year. So we do have our flyers that we will be able to put in the schools with permission.
I know that at my school, we have morning announcements that go over the intercoms. So maybe we could ask the principal or whoever runs the morning announcements if we could talk about the youth fair and the youth city council.
I think that's a great idea. I say this for, I think we have a very diverse group from different schools, different regions, well, not regions, but different areas in Hutchinson within the USD three oh eight boundary. But I definitely think making announcements to the school over the intercom is a great idea because people always listen to those anyway. I, and I also say this because I'm not big on Twitter, Instagram or Facebook. I am a talker though, clearly. But I will be very happy to see that we have a great plan to get the word out that we're doing this. If you have any more comments?
Um, kind of like Malia's, um, we have this thing in the morning, um, kind of like a morning meeting, um. Morning meeting, there's like announcements and upcoming stuff. Um, our school has flyers around like, it's upcoming for like the animal shelter room, so opening up posters and a bunch of flyers around the school. And maybe, um, either me or Kevay, you want to, you could ask Mr. Henry, our current principal, if one of us could go up and talk and tell everybody a little bit about it. Or if you could have it too, the morning slideshow for Jump Start on Fridays.
Yeah, I will definitely be willing to help, um, anything to get this out and kids involved. I will be able to, you know, help and participate.
I know it, it depends on the principals of the school, but even just discussing it, it seems like we have a great plan moving forward. And I cannot congratulate enough, I cannot stress that. Uh, any further comments?
I do not have any further comments, thank you.
Nope, okay, hey, if we can move on to the next item, please?
Item five B, a drive for the unhoused has been proposed. A date and venue needs to be selected as well as other drive details.
All right, so we have not yet set a date. That was something that we slightly discussed in our prior, um, study session. And we have already discussed having another study session, which today would be a good day to set that date just because there was a lot to fit in in that one study session and we weren't quite sure of all the, you know, we weren't quite sure what everything was going to happen yet, but we do know we want to have that drive still. And we have not had the date and time set. But I do believe that this would be a good time to set a study session for more discussion on the, um, a drive for the housing.
Uh, just a little bit of clarification for a drive for the unhoused. For the venue and date, um, I know we originally discussed having the schools host the drives. And it would be multiple drives where we pull everything together. But are we thinking about doing a singular drive where everyone can just donate their things?
I think that just one singular drive would be able to, would be a better idea. Because, uh, some of the schools have already done like food drives and clothing drives. Or like at the high school, I know they have like a clothing shop or something. And the middle school has a, a, a clothes, clothing, uh, room. And so maybe we could just like have it open to the public to donate.
Personally, I am on the other side of that. I do not agree with that choice. I think that not only can it be hard for a lot of people to even go to that drive, not, I mean, cars, time, you know, that plays a lot into going out of your way to find, go to a specific location versus just everyone, you know, takes their kid to school or the kids somehow get to school, you know, and they can bring the stuff there to that school to a place that they are already having in their schedule. That, you know, we're not adding on more to their pla- like another place to their plate, just an extra activity to their plate at the same place that they go Monday through Friday. And the closet and stuff is great because then we could see if the schools would like to donate anything to that since that free clothes anyways. And so that would also leave open another option for more donations.
I like both ideas, but I think I like Malia's a little bit more, her idea about getting also just like the schools involved with the closets. I think it would be amazing idea. Again, we could talk more about it in our study session, but so far I feel like we bought like a great foundation to work off of.
Yeah, same as Malia's, getting the schools closets more involved. It's like the eighth grade has a hawk's nest and I believe the seventh grade just opened up, um, just to stop by or the closet for itself. And, and Midtown has one too, so getting like the schools kind of more involved with the donations and stuff.
I definitely think before we actually set in stone what each school will be doing the drive for, I personally think that we should first talk to the schools if they are even interested in doing a drive because it'd be a little counterintuitive if we were to lay out a great plan for all these drives and the school not being able or not having time to do the drive. So I definitely think it's something that we should do first before we have a study session. I think it's something, I think we should just talk to the schools first and see if they're even willing to host a drive.
I agree with Ruby because if we don't know if the schools can like even do the drive, then we sh- we, uh, should.
I agree with Ruby. I think that obviously we will need feedback on whether or not we can even do these drives at the school. And assuming that we do have both options available to us, I am still head on for us doing individual ones at the schools versus one big one. But if it does call for one big one, I will not be against having one if that's what needs to happen. And so yes, talking to the schools before a study session should be on our list of discussions with our schools that we have to do, one of many. And I think that we should be able to have that soon due to, um, May and Ju- June probably being the best time for those drives, you know, just cause school's going to end soon, so kids will not be in school soon. So that'll be a quick, a quick little conversation we will need to have.
Well, if, uh, the schools actually do say we could, they could do drives, would we have like, would we ask the schools what certain drives they would be able to do?
I definitely think that would be something that we have to discuss with the schools themselves, namely the principal of the school. I think what we first need to ask is if we can go ahead and motion for a study sess- sorry, a study session first? Or do you think we need more time to be able to talk with, um, our heads of school?
I believe that we have, even if we do motion for a study session, we will still have a good week to discuss with our schools, which is, which should be enough time for us to talk to our principals and just ask them if this is something they're interested in. So I think we should move a study session for, um, around the first. Just checking to see what works best just because of finals and everything, kind of get something in there. The?
I think we can just go ahead and mo- motion for a study session and we can set the wait for a good opportunity.
Oh, do you? Okay, is that working?
Great. A second.
Great. If you could call roll? Mosley? Yes. Gus?
Present.
Oh, yes, sorry. Wellington?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Tovar Contré?
Yes.
Great, next item, please?
Item five C, participation on Third Thursday has been scheduled for this month's Third Thursday. We will be out sharing who we are, what we do and how to get involved.
So this is something that we discussed at the study session, I cannot say that today previously. And it's something that I've been working on. Currently we will be having, I believe, two flyers at Third Thursday with us this week. And that will be both the flyer for the youth fair and a flyer on what we do here at the youth city council. And I know a few of my council members have agreed to go, so I'm very excited to see everyone there.
I definitely agree with that. If you, everyone on the live stream or even in the room right now, if you have kids that are interested in participating in youth city council when they are of age, this is a great chance to come and learn about us. Or if you're just generally interested in coming to the youth fair and you just don't know really a lot about it, we are there to answer questions. So this would be a great time to, you know, stop by and get all that info, um, from us, um, on Thursday.
This kind of, sorry, this kind of ties in also with item A, which was the updates for the youth fair and modes of just getting the word out there. This was something that we discussed, so A, we could have more of a presence in our community and B, also advertise for the youth fair.
Yes, I agree. Sorry, I was writing down some of that stuff in my calendar just so I could remember. I will not be at the Third Thursday unfortunately, so that is not something that I will be able to attend with you guys due to my birthday and planning eighteen. But I think that that would be a great place to put out our youth fair and to be able to just put out any events that we are trying to support and push for the community.
I agree that, uh, that showing up to the Third Thursday would be a great way to advertise the youth city council and telling people about events that we're going to be hosting.
Um, kind of, um, this kind of goes with, um, the youth fair, so.
Well, I, no, I will personally be very excited to go to Third Thursday mostly because we will be close to Bizaco's. Like I already mentioned, Bizaco's is one of my favorite places to eat, a little shout out to them. But I am so excited to see people in the community there. We will be, again, we will be explaining who we are, what we do for the community, so.
Yes, I definitely agree with that. It's personally been a while since I've been able to participate, um, in a Third Thursday. But I just, the last time I went, I just loved seeing everyone out there and getting to personally learn about businesses I may have, may or may not have known of.
All right, great, so that looks like you're all super excited for Third Thursday. So I would just like to reiterate that activity, which will be the eighteenth of this week. We are going to be out there with our community and having a booth, I believe, or what may be a booth, what appears like a booth. And we will be, um, out there to go and push our youth fair events. So we do welcome you guys, as Vivid has said, out to come and see us and join us, not me though, but I will be there in the spirit. And we thank you guys for, um, coming, you know, in the future, for coming to our Third Thursday event. And I believe that that is all for Third Thursday. Any further comments?
Um, I have one for Third Thursday, um, there, there's going to be a lot more people there because of the track meet going on Thursday, thirteen different teams, there's going to be a lot more people from out of town, so that'd be good for advertising.
Okay, great, awesome, thank you. I didn't even know that. Not really updated on the sports, so we appreciate that, thank you.
Yeah, not every city has a youth city council, so it would be really good to kind of let people know who you are, what you do and what you are wanting to do, some ways to engage the youth. Maybe asking them, hey, what's something that you would like? Or even thinking to yourselves, what is something that you really could have benefited from when you were younger or still could benefit from? If it was kind of an all encompassing thing or event like the youth fair, if you knew what all the happenings were going to be in the summer, um, prior to summer and trying to figure out, going to different websites for different organizations and looking up any events that are coming up versus it all being at one place, um, that would be awesome. I know that as a young mom, I didn't even know what things to take my daughter to. I was just asking the library or asking like different websites what I could take my daughter to. So the fact that you're holding a youth fair for all youth, not just twelve and up, but for all children, all ages, is really good so that kids know what's coming up, their parents know too and stay informed. So I'm just really excited for the youth fair.
I feel like since the track meet is going to be the same day, that maybe some, we could inspire other people to talk to their city and get, um, youth council set up.
I agree with that. I think that this would be a perfect opportunity to, uh, just show them the power and effect that youth can have in the community and how beneficial it is to, or how beneficial it could be to their community to have something like this.
Um, so this kind of wraps around the thing for the youth fair. Did we ever get a response from KDC?
All right, so in summary, we are very excited to be present at Third Thursday this month. I will be very excited to see y'all there. I also told you one of my reasons, it's okay. But I also love the community that attends Third Thursday because they're my community. I love them. And any further comments, concerns, questions?
I do not have any, thank you.
Great, if we go ahead and move on to the next item, please?
Item six, closing remarks by youth city council members.
All right, so I would like to start with, um, our, my school, Hutchinson High School suspension rates, or at least the top three suspension reason- reasonings. I will have the actual reason for you hopefully by next meeting, which is what my principal said he could give to me by then. But we had discussed wanting to know what our schools and our youth had struggled with so that we would know the areas that we need to hit and how to properly, um, make events that support or make like different, you know, groups and stuff like that to help kids transition and do better and just grow a healthier and live a healthier lifestyle. So, have to get to my note page because I was just trying to write down everything in my calendar. And there we go. All right, so the number one reason is physical contact in an angry manner. Fighting is very common and sadly it is something that does not seem to be really lessening in Hutchinson High School. We have had assemblies about violence and then had violence right after the assemblies, which was very interesting because you would think after a forty-five minute assembly, you'd be like, hey, maybe I shouldn't pow, pow, pow somebody in the face, but that is not a thought, that is currently going through our youth heads. And I wish that it was because, um, learning how to properly convey your anger is something that can be very hard. Or just your feelings, you know, anyways, and it's not something that I'm judging our youth for because everyone has to learn eventually and it may take longer and ma- people may not be exposed to an environment where it is common for them to properly handle their anger. But it is, it has been shown that our youth is really struggling with containing and controlling and properly displaying their emotions. So I think, um, talking to schools about getting more just environments where kids are able to talk more and not just having one therapist that comes in every once in a while or having more rooms and spaces where kids can just take a break and everything can help in, um, slowing down or just showing kids that, hey, fighting isn't necessarily the route to go. And I know that Hutch, Hutchinson High School is doing a great job of trying to do that. And Hutchinson School pe- schools period are with having little And Hutchinson's school pe- schools period are with having little mood rooms and stuff, and I think that's great and I just think that we should expand that and have. Larger options because right now Hacha has one for people who came from virtual and are going into. Public, but that leaves just the people who have always been in public school to figure that out on their own, and I think that it would be great if we had one for just. Anyone to access anytime and not just when the teachers are in the building first and third hour, because what if you're having a problem in fourth hour? And they're not there. Another problem at our school for, you know, in suspension ages are number, our second reason. Which is smoking, vaping, drugs, it is a big problem at our, my school personally, I have. I have friends who I know who have a big problem with that and struggle, and it's hard watching them because you are so young and you struggle and. You know, sometimes we don't even know that it's a struggle because people tell us that, oh, this, this is fine, it's just weed or it's just this and, you know. There may be medical benefits to stuff, but. You know, if, if it, for one, if it's not regulated, that is dangerous, okay, if you're getting it from an unregulated source, that is. Way more dangerous than anyone could know and taking things out and just, you know, just one, smoking is bad for your lungs. And just smoking and smoking and smoking, no matter what benefits you think you may get from it, you know, that damages them and they don't always believe that, that they just. They just take firsthand information and they're like, oh, well, they use this for cancer sometimes, so they just take that and they just rock with it, and I think that. Informing kids is really good and as we have been, but just continuing to inform and continuing to, um. Push them into trying to find better ways to calm down or relieve their stress would be. Something that we should look into for the youth, and our third biggest, um, reason is just blatant defiance. And that is something that is really hard because kids will be kids, you know, they will rebel and everything, um, I think that honestly. The parents, that, you know, we, we can't really do anything when the, when the parents aren't really supporting schools as much as they used to, so. Um, I do hope that with our community events, the parents and the teachers are able to connect more so that there is more connection. As, you know, like they used to when I was younger with parents and teachers, we're a lot better at communicating and. The kids weren't always the ones who were like, oh, well, my teacher just doesn't like me and the parents just took that firsthand, because yes, sometimes the teachers don't like us, but. I was one of them kids, sometimes I didn't like teachers, so I think that. Um, that problem alone could really just be really helped with the community events because it gets every member in our community together. Parents, teachers, kids, which will help build a firmer foundation in their relationships.
Thank you for staying on top of that, Malia, unfortunately, I will not be getting my suspension rates and all that info until later this week. So hopefully by next, I will be able to get them, and I know we're each individually working on getting that information from our schools and. Thank you for that, and when we all eventually get our, our information, we'll be able to compare the reasons and see. What we can do about it, because again, the youth is very important for us, we are here to represent them, we are here to care for them.
Malia, can I ask a question for Hutchinson High School? Um, number two, to, is there a protocol for like when a child is caught vaping or smoking or. Any of the things that you listed, is it just like a warning or does it automatically go into in-school or out-of-school suspension, what does that look like?
So there is, I, he told, my, my principal told me he would give me all that information, the, later in this week, right, but he did give me one of the main ones. And the first pro- like protocol that they follow is, um, they don't give you a ticket, so they, they, they don't fine you because. Really, whenever you smoke, that's something between the city and the school, and the school themselves do not give you a fine for, you know, smoking or anything. And they, um, do a two-day suspension, now, they, I believe, have been switching to. In-person suspension because out-of-school suspension is just, you know, has not really proven to work. And kids see that as a way to just be like, oh, I get two days off of school, especially because Hacha is really. Big on not trying to hold their kids back, so they allow them to catch up on work and stuff, and so that just gives the kids a two-day vacation where they come back and. Finish their worksheets or sometimes even take their worksheets home and do it while they're at home. And so it has not been proven to be, you know, effective, so they have been doing more in-school suspension, and then they have, um. I think the second one is where they do get, you know, a fine from the school, and I believe the third one is they are. Suspended for the whole trimester, and they cannot come back to the second trimester. Or that's the second one, I have to get that information clear, but he did, he did tell me about these, and you know, he listed them off, but. He said that he wanted to be able to give me the more accurate ones, so he still has to give it to me, so. I know that those are definitely in the punishments, but I can't necessarily. Give you the first, second, third, fourth, until later this week.
I have a question, what are the amounts of the fines?
Sorry, what'd you say?
The amounts of the fines?
See, he did, that's something that will be discussed later because he didn't tell me that, um, when it came to the court, he couldn't really give me much of that because that is legal. He said that that's really between the, the, the kids and the, the city. He said that he could give me the school stuff, but that has not been given to me yet, so I can write that question down and. Try to address that with you later, then our next meeting, whenever I hopefully get the answer to that.
As always, the humor is what's gonna be my foundation.
You're welcome, thank you.
Any further comments?
Um, I have no further comments, sorry, I was trying to write down his question so I can remember to adjust that. I do not have any further comments about the suspension rates in my school, thank you very much.
Thank you, Malia.
I would personally like to thank everyone for coming out here and for watching and for watching in the very future. Um, I appreciate the opportunity that you guys have given us as a youth to come up here and talk to you guys. And this has been a gr- great meeting, in my opinion, and very productive, so I would like to thank everyone for coming out and for listening to us. Rainbow for forty-six minutes, um, and that is all I have to say, thank you so much.
Uh, thank, I would like to thank everyone that's here and is watching live. And maybe watching later in the future. Uh, uh, also on May second at six. At the seventh grade, there will be the middle school orchestra concert.
As always, thank you everyone for watching and you for always showing your support, uh, pardon me. Uh, Hutchinson will be hosting the Week of the Young Child, which includes a bunch of activities. To get young children engaged, this starts from Monday, April fifteenth. All the way to Saturday, April twentieth, which includes things like fun at the Cosmosphere, at the library, third Thursday, every county museum. And it really is just a way to get the youth more involved because we're, while we, as the youth city council. Were elected on the demographic of being middle schoolers up to high school. We also want to involve young children as well, just to make sure that they feel cared for, make sure they're just. Just that they're doing okay, and this was something that was done by a lot of different organizations. And different groups here in Hutchinson, so again, that is from. April fifteenth all the way to April twentieth, and there should be a flyer on. We'll share it on the homepage, there you go.
Um, I would like to thank everyone that's watching this or to the future, if you're watching this and everyone in this room for coming out. Um, again, your support is greatly appreciated, um, I just want to, um. Retouch third Thursday, if you wanna learn about what we do more. Or if you wanna go to the youth fair and just want more information, I highly suggest that if you can pop in. Um, to third Thursday and get, um, all that stuff from us, and just say hi, we love to see. Um, people from the community and meet new people from the community, and. Thank you again, your support would be gra- bleh, oh my gosh, would be greatly appreciated.
Thank you all, thank you all who are watching and who came, um, for coming to this Y C C meeting. Um, and this Thursday, just a reminder, this Thursday, there is. A track meet and schools get out at eleven thirty or twelve thirty or twelve. Um, and like. Abby said, um, May second, there is a orchestra concert at gym seven at six P M.
Yeah, it's at six P M.
Alright, thank you again, we'll see you all at third Thursday, and thank you so much for always showing your continuing support. If we have any more further comments?
I do not, thank you.
Okay, and in that case, is there a motion to the gym?
Um, yes.
I second.
If you could please call roll?
Mosley?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Wellington?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Tovar Contrave?
Yes.
Thank you so much, everybody, have a good night.